Lead us with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess after coming back from vacation, I move at a slower pace for some reason. Again, I'd like to welcome you into the meeting. Reminder to silence your cellphones if you would please, and the meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly over there on the left. And if you do need a listening device, you can contact Robert and he would be able to help you with that. Cindy, if we could start.
Okay, routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any comments, changes? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of March 5th, 2013.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any changes, corrections, or comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $340,976.30.
Move the bills. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? If not, those in favor approving the bills, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign for no. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four, the following reports were received and placed on file in the auditor's office. The Minnehaw County Human Services Report for February 2013, the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Department Report for February 2013, the Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center Report for February 2013, and the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of February 28th, 2013.
Thank you. Those reports are obviously available for anybody's public viewing.
Item five is personnel. Item A is to approve the routine action.
I'll move routine action. Second.
Any questions or comments for Carrie? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no application for abatement today. Item seven is notices and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a request for proposals for inmate, telephone, and video visitation system.
I'll make that motion.
Motion and a second. Any comments from the sheriff's department or the warden? As long as you're drinking, I'll make sure you come up front.
See if I can elaborate well.
Good morning.
Good morning, Darren Young, county jail warden. We've been, our contracts are coming to an end with our frame made phones and for the video visitation. The phone ends May 30th, if I recall correctly, and the video visitation is June 15th. So we are looking, and we knew this a year ago when we were putting together the video visitation proposals over, looking for a one-year contract so that we could merge this contract together. It's kind of the trend out there is helping do this, so it's managing those two technologies together. And so that is our goal, is to do that as well, and we've got the RFP and we're ready for it to see what interest there is, so.
Thank you, Darren. Are there any questions for Darren? If I might, those two systems, if you will, are managed by the same vendor, correct?
Currently, they are not.
That's what the intent would be.
But the intent would be, yes, be managed by one vendor.
And as far as the cost to the county, I just want to make sure people understand that's a cost that's passed along, if you will, to family and prisoners and we'll call them guests of our system. So it's a clearinghouse, if you will.
Yes.
Good.
I expect there to be minimal cost to the county when through this process.
Commissioner Peckus?
I can tell you that when attorneys get, collect calls, though, they routinely accept those, so then that gets billed back to us through the voucher, so. If they are billing back their phone charges, which I'm assuming they are.
Right, I imagine so.
How come the attorneys always have an exception for billing issues?
Exactly. Well, it gets more expensive because they're charging by the hour, too.
Yeah, exactly. Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a question. This isn't a revenue generator for the county, correct?
It is a revenue.
It is a revenue generator, and I'm just wondering why it's a revenue generator, other than to cover expenses.
Well, that's maybe, you want me to handle it?
Go ahead.
Okay. It's, traditionally it's been that way. It is, there is some expense and costs to the county. We have staff that have to monitor the phones and have to investigative purposes, need to go back for cases and go back and do some investigative work, prepare and possibly testify as they're pulling these recordings or tapes to, so that helps cover those costs as well.
I would call it not a revenue generator, then. I would call, I would say it's covering costs, and that's kind of what my question was. So it covers costs that are incurred because of the system, so, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Warden, does this either one, whoever gets the bid will be the remote, they can remote access the visitation? Like for Mitchell, they can call in and do a, yeah?
Yes, yes, yeah. The RFP calls for the web-based video visitation so that users can use this from anywhere in the world. This last year, or close to a year that we've had this in place, I know there has been some concerns about how well it's worked, but there has, there's no question about the technology and the ability for families to connect from all over. I had people call me from Miami and Atlanta, and they were going to fly up here and visit their loved one here, and I told them, you know, save their dime there, get on the internet for 35 cents a minute, they can have the same visit they would have a free one in the lobby here, so rather than save your plane ticket, hotel, and meals, everything else, so. Lots of people thanked me for having the opportunity. Inmates have thanked me because their family couldn't travel. If they wasn't for this purpose, they'd never see them, so.
Is there a limited number that can do that at one time, or can?
Well, it's only limited by the number of kiosks that we have, and our current provider has always said that, you know, if you get to the point where there's a line, they will add more kiosks because that just continues to, saves us a lot of hassle and does continue to.
But to real, you know, even somebody from Beersford or Canton or something where there's bad weather, they can still make that visitations?
Right across town, many people, you know, to bring your, you know, several families, they have several young children, and to bring their young children to the jail and try to keep them occupied while they're trying to have a good visit, whereas doing it from home where they can continue to play with their own toys at home, even that's a plus right there as well, so.
Any other questions for Darren? I need a.
You've got a motion?
Motion and a second.
We already have.
Oh, we do. I am on vacation now. Any other questions, comments? If not, those in favor of the auditor to publish the request for proposals, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number eight are planning and zoning notices. Item A is the first reading and authorize county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider adoption of the 2012 International Building Code and amendments and additions thereto, the 2012 International Residential Code and amendments and additions thereto, and the 2012 International Existing Building Code and amendments and additions thereto. Pat Herman.
Good morning, commissioners. Pat Herman with Minnehaw County Planning. It's time again to re-adopt a new building code. Our last code is from 2009. A new addition has been issued for 2012, and we would like to go ahead and have this be the first reading for consideration of adoption of three new ordinances. Cindy read each of the codebooks that we would adopt. Those are the ones we traditionally use. It covers everything that's out in the county. This would be the first reading and having the auditor publish notice for a public hearing on April 2nd, 9:15 for the adoption of the three building codes.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions for Pat?
I move to authorize the auditor to publish.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to publish.
I do have one question of Pat. We will get, will we get the changes in the document, or?
Yes, you will. You'll get the whole ordinance and an explanation as well.
And it's underscored and stripped over?
We can do that.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we do have a motion to publish. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. John Peckus.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO number 10449 in the amount of $300. The applicant currently is attempting to purchase a home, and during the course of the title search, it was discovered that there was a $300 lien against the property, though of course rested against both she and her ex-husband. The couple was divorced in August of 1989. The $300 county aid bill was actually incurred by her then-ex-husband on May 6th of 2001. So nice try, but they were divorced. So she is asking for the lien to be released, and I'll make that motion, and I'll also include the fact that the $300 lien should continue against her ex-husband. Second.
We have a motion and a second to, I guess.
Allow the $300 and have it continue against the ex.
Okay, allow the $300 to continue against the husband, but be dropped against the spouse. Any questions? I'm assuming that person's not here. So we have a motion. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Next is on DPNO number 61730 in the amount of $7,045.91, and this is a first. I've been doing this for quite some time. But anyway, the applicant currently is asking for forgiveness of the county aid lien with a payment of $3,000. That's roughly 43% of the total lien amount. The lien basically was composed primarily of poor assistance all the way through attorney liens from the year 2007 through 2012, and currently there is an upcoming felony trial scheduled for next month against the applicant. The applicant is hoping to lessen her debt load with the release of her county aid lien as well as her plan to sell the home to her father, the co-signer on the mortgage. And then, of course, there would be a release from the obligation, which would happen with the refinancing. She is offering $3,000 in payment in the hopes of clearing this debt. Currently, she lists assets of $108,550, which includes her home and vehicles. Her liabilities, including the home mortgage, student loans, liens and judgments total $170,000. The applicant recently began working for a local hotel, and that was about in mid-2013. She makes $8 an hour. She works roughly 32 hours a week. On her 2011 tax return, there was a $5,114 refund paid for family necessities for her and her children, closing vehicle repairs and bills. She states that she is raising currently three children, however, only the ones that are 10 and 16 years old are listed on her tax return. The applicant is thankful for the assistance in prior years, and she regrets not to be able to fulfill the entire amount, and she's hoping that we will accept $3,000. The reason why this is unique is that I don't think we ever had a felony trial waiting in the wings, but we were going to incur more expense with the potential for an appeal in the future that the county would be on the hook for. So essentially, she's threading the eye of the needle by being absolved of her responsibilities for a quick $3,000 and yet incurring more expenses while dumping her assets, and essentially she's making herself judgment-proof. I can't make this motion.
Yes, Commissioner Heiburger?
A question for Mr. Peckus. I guess, you know, and you understand the law better than I do, but I looked at it as far as cleaning up the mess behind getting $3,000, which we might not ever see otherwise, and then moving forward from this point. So tell me where I'm wrong in my thought process.
Well, she has $108,000 asset right now, and by getting her off of there and letting her dad take it over, in two months, we won't have any attachment except personally, not resting against any real property.
Commissioner Kelly?
I would move to deny.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to deny.
I have a question for our state's attorney.
And, go ahead.
Was anything I said incorrect?
Nope, that's correct. There's nothing to attach to once the father takes over the ownership of the home with the, and.
Would you consider the person to be somewhat judgment-proof, then?
It would be much more difficult to recover the full amount, in my opinion. It's just my opinion from what I know of the facts here.
And after, and after the voucher is signed by the judge in the future, and let's say there's another $1,000 or $2,000 attached, she can still come back to us, can't she?
That's right.
Okay. I have a question, John, if I might. When I read through the application process, one of the things that was confusing to me is her tax return showed a home address that's different than the lien address.
Yeah, and I.
Are we playing?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question.
That makes no sense to me.
Mr. Chair, that's the 2011 tax return, though, so that's.
I understand, but the issue is, is that she's asking for a lien release on an address that she doesn't live at.
Well, she may have lived there in 2012, though. That was 2011 tax.
That could be a good assumption, but I'm not sure.
I don't know.
We know that for a fact. Seems like we're maybe playing games with assets a little bit. Is the applicant here by chance, or a representation of that person? Okay?
Mr. Chair, I am going to vote against the motion because from my perspective, if you look, most of these bills have been for poor relief, and $3,000 today is better than, who knows, if anything down in the future, and so I would rather take the $3,000 bucks today.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I think she's working the system. I don't know what, you know, with the felony coming up, and I believe that was perhaps a drug charge, is that correct?
It's a drug charge.
I don't think at this time, this is the kind of thing we want to forgive. Yeah, $3,000, $3,000, but I think there's a point in time where you just have to say, wait a minute, you know, this is not right, and she should not be given forgiveness.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I have a question for Kirsten. So if this house got foreclosed on, what would be the chances of us getting more than $3,000 out of this position?
Without knowing the condition of the house or the value, I guess, I mean, I know the value of it is what is stated on the application. I don't know, I'd just be speculating at this point, I guess. The thing that would, I guess, cause some concern, I think what Commissioner Peckus is saying is that there at least is a real asset to place a lien upon at this point once the father has sole ownership, which is the goal here. That won't be a possibility, no matter what the value of the asset is, so. It's entirely possible that you wouldn't get it from it, though.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, I think there is, of course, another possibility, which is that we defer action on it, and, you know, as far as working the system, the system is paying her $8 an hour for 32 hours a week, which gives her no benefits whatsoever. She'll probably get better benefits being in our county jail as far as healthcare, et cetera. I think maybe we should just ask her for a better offer at this point. At the same time, again, I don't think that, you know, the, most of those bills, again, are for poor relief. This person's life has not been that easy, and $3,000 is certainly a significant amount of money for a person making $8 an hour.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I don't care what kind of offer she came back with, I don't, unless it was full settlement, I wouldn't be interested in supporting, and the big elephant in the room is the felony charge hanging over her. And, you know, we have, at least if they go through the felony deal, guilty or not guilty, there's something to attach on the bills for the public defender's office, and if we give it up to the father, you know, there are times when someone wants to get their life back together, but not always does the county have to be the thing, the entity that does that. That's where family comes in a lot of times, and sacrifice on the part of the individual. Commender for wanting to get her life straightened out, but on the other hand, I'm not sure that this is our obligation.
Any other comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm going to support your motion rather reluctantly. I guess I'd come in after reading it thinking I would go with the compromise, but listening to arguments, I guess at this time I'm going to go with the motion, and maybe she'll, you know, come back again with a different offer even after the felony case is done, so.
Any other comments, questions? Cindy, if you wouldn't mind rereading the motion so that we have it clear if a yes vote is to decline.
The motion is to deny the compromise, the request for compromise of lien.
Thank you. Everybody understand? I think we have a roll call vote, if you would, please.
Commissioner Barth?
No.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes.
Vanega?
Yes. Motion is approved to decline the request. Now we have an opportunity for a public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments about an item on the agenda, any item other than what's on the agenda, they can come forward now. If not, we'll go to item, the first item in regular business, item 10.
9:15 a.m. is the time for a public hearing to consider the 2012 carryover supplements to various FY 2013 budgets. Darlene Johnson.
Good morning, Darlene Johnson.
Good morning, Darlene. Thank you for filling in.
Sure. This is a public hearing, and this is an annual request that you have for those expenditures that were incurred in 2012 and not paid until 2013. There were a few documents attached that were submitted by several departments. We're requesting a supplement in the general fund of $130,889.78. Highway Department, $945,585.25, which included a number of projects that were contracted for in 2012 and have not been paid yet. Our DSC management, $11,693.52. Pass-through grants, $136,454.35. JAG grants, $47,142.82. The building fund, $68,923.98. Capital projects, $50,000. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Darlene? Commissioner Kelly?
The pass-through grants, no.
Several of those, CDBG grant, some of the pass-through money that we send to Southeast Tech for several of those programs, that's part of it. The other part is the juvenile reception, JABG grants that, for the reception center over at DOA.
Okay, and these are where we receive the money already, and we haven't passed it on to the entity?
No, this, we budget usually for those grants. When we receive the grant, we budget for the whole amount. This is the amount that's not been spent yet.
Yeah.
We have not received the dollars for that.
But it's not general fund money, it's?
That's correct.
Specific, okay.
Yeah. We receive the money because our, the grant is in our name, and then we pass those funds through to a different agency.
One other question?
Yes.
We were originally talking in terms of what a million and a half dollars perhaps that would be, that we'd be able to at least consider putting into a restricted fund or a limited, I can't remember exactly. Is this going to eat that up, or is this, was this figured in already?
No, that won't. We will be bringing something to the commission after Bob is back from his medical leave. So no, this is, the general fund portion of this is really quite small this year. Last year, it was nearly $900,000. So this is a fairly small amount with $130,000 for the general fund.
So the other numbers don't affect what we were talking about there?
That's correct.
Thank you.
If I remember right, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that million and a half dollar number that you used before was just an estimate of the expense side of the journal, and we have not recorded the revenue side, so there could be a change in that number by the time we're done.
Right, right. There is.
Thank you. Other questions for Darlene? I think we need to break this down.
I think we have proponents and opponents.
Between the general and the highway fund, but if there is any public comments or questions about the presentation so far, that would be good?
No, thanks.
Yes.
No, no, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the highway fund. Is DJ here this morning?
Tom Wilsley.
Tom, I see him.
Don't we have to make a motion? No? We need a motion. We need a motion.
Yeah, we will get one.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Morning. Tom, what's the highway department? The highway department portion of it is mostly a project that we let last fall for two box culverts up on County Highway 121. The others are just our normal operating funds that we need to carry over from the year, previous year.
Anyone have any questions for Tom? Tom, I think one of the, when I looked at this, one of the largest pieces of that, and I soon as I get done messing this up, was the, I can't get to it right now, was about a $500,000 item for, that showed a project number, but is the project number the Baltic Bridge?
No, this, those are two structures up on County Road 121, just north of Arrow's data center.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the Baltic Bridge?
Not those, no.
Okay. But I think that was over half of the request, correct?
That's probably over half, yes. That was 500, as I remember, it was 512 or something like that.
501, 501,000.
Yeah, found it, 500, almost 502 of the 945.
502, okay.
Any other questions on the highway portion? I believe we need two motions. Can we do it?
Just want to approve resolution if everything's correct in the resolution.
So we can do all of them at one time? Good.
I'd make a motion to approve all of them.
Second. A second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? If not, those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Cindy.
Item 11 is consider a motion to appoint Ryan Straff for a three-year term to the City of Sioux Falls Solid Waste Planning Board effective June 1st, 2013. Ryan Straff?
Good morning, commissioners. Ryan Straff, County Planning. I just had a memo that I had submitted to you regarding the appointment of myself to the City of Sioux Falls Solid Waste Planning Board. I guess they just want to see some action so they can return that to the mayor's office to say that, yes, I will serve on that board, and in the past, we've always sat on that board, just looking at different ordinance items and their single stream or their master plan for sustainability, so.
Mr. Chair, Ryan's been an effective member of our planning and zoning, and I am proud to make a motion to approve his.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and thank you for your work on that, Ryan. You have done a great job, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Those in favor of approving Ryan's nomination signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously gives Ryan another function.
Item number 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign construction management services agreement in the amount of $119,092 between Minnehaw County and HDR Engineering for Structure 50-194-059, the Baltic Bridge. Tom Wilsley.
Good morning again, Tom.
The, this is for the construction management of the Baltic structure. This, we like to use the same firm that does the design to do the construction management. They're the most familiar with the plans, and we reviewed the hours, and very reasonable, the $119,000.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions about item number 12? If not, those in favor of the authorization to sign a construction management agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign construction management services agreement in the amount of $58,100. in the amount of $58,175 between Minnehaha County and Burrows Engineering Incorporated for Structures 50-240-069 and 50-240-073 on County Highway 121. Tom Wilsley.
Once again, this is for construction management, and this is actually the project that we carried over from 2012, so.
Okay.
For two structures up north.
Thank you. Any questions?
Is there one more bridge to build on 121?
There are two more. They're going to be constructed, they're in the design phase right now.
Are they going, you don't know whether they're going to be culverted yet or not?
Pardon?
Are they going to be the box culvert, too?
It looks like they're going to be bridges. There's enough drainage that has come in between these that it's going to require a larger structure.
One of them's still got a 6,000 pound limit, right?
There's a three-ton bridge and a six-ton bridge up there. We're trying to get all of these taken care of this year.
Should have been a limit, or?
So that it'd be legal laws.
Any other questions for Tom? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment that the one that we're approving today hopes to be completed by the middle of July.
The number 13, the one that we're just talking about now, is July, if I remember correctly, 12th or 13th, somewhere in there, yes. And then, we have it scheduled so that the other two will start immediately following that.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Now we have a motion and a second to approve item 13 for a construction management service agreement. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 14 is update and status report of the 88th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson in the commission office. Since the main portion of the legislative session wrapped up this past week on Friday, I'm going to go through this update a little differently than I normally do and just update you on some of the resolutions and the items that really were brought forward from the SDACC from the beginning of the session and kind of how those ended up. If you have any other questions on specific bills, I'd be happy to answer those as well. As you'll recall, there were three main initiatives or ideas that came out of that convention. And the first was to, that really came from Minnehaha County, from this commission, was a mechanism for the state to pay criminal defense costs arising from actions out of state institutions. And that had some issues early on and did not even make it into bill form. And I understand that there will be some conversations moving forward, and there may be something future on that, but that one was resolved fairly quickly. Couple others. Senate Bill 128 would have given counties the ability to restrict discharge of fireworks on the Fourth of July in the case where there were extreme fire dangers and emergency managers were seeing this as a real safety threat and issue around counties. That was referred to Senate local government and was tabled in Senate local government. That one also was not particularly successful. And then, the final resolution that came out of the convention was SB 129 that would have restricted TIF actions, that if a local government created a TIF, that the limits on the property taxes, the TIF would only affect the local government that created the TIF. Where right now, if a TIF is created, those restrictions are placed on, the city creates it, it's placed on county portion of taxes, school district, townships, all of those. That would affect only the entity creating the TIF, and that was also defeated as well. Just a couple, one other bill of note is that you brought forward, the association brought forward the fireworks bill. A bill did pass, and I just noticed was signed by the governor either this morning or yesterday, allowing the discharge of fireworks up to the Sunday after the Fourth of July. So, that will go the, actually go the other direction. And then, obviously, the last bill that was a big focus all the way in the early part of the session was Senate Bill 70. And some of the governors.
Which one, Robert?
Senate Bill 70. The governor's criminal justice initiative that was passed early on. So, those were, what I, just looking through, thought were a number of the bigger bills for us this session. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Robert? Commissioner Heiburger?
Mine's a trivial question. On the fireworks, one, if they can shoot off fireworks until the Sunday after the Fourth of July, what if the Fourth of July is on Saturday? Does that mean they only have the next day, or is it going to go for a whole week? I'm just curious, is?
Going, just going back and reading the language on that statute this morning, it said the Sunday after the Fourth of July. So, if Fourth of July falls on a Saturday, you've got one day. If it falls on a Monday, you've got almost another week.
Yeah.
Well, are we creating job security for the police department in that county?
So then, if it's, so then, if it's on Sunday, it's done on Sunday.
Except for the fact that we would then observe the Fourth of July on Monday. Just kidding.
Oh, seriously?
I'm sorry, but I think I lost control somehow. Any other comments?
Another question. Commissioner? Robert, wasn't there a bill to allow for bonding on highway projects? And that may not have been a Minnehaha County bill, but wasn't that a SDACC initiative?
I'm familiar with the language that you're talking about. I don't, I can find the bill number and.
Later, thank you.
Yeah, I'll check into that one for you.
Any other questions for Robert? Thank you for keeping track of the legislative activity or lack thereof. We appreciate your help. We'll go to the county liaison reports. Does any of the commissioners have reports? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just one comment. The highway intends to go back to their summer hours in April.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any new business? Any old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
In your absence, we approved a proclamation for St. Patrick's Day, and they asked for one of us to go down and read it. And if you're not going to go, I would hope maybe one of my colleagues here would go because I'm not going to be reading it.
I have already been cornered and agreed to go with the promise of free green beer.
There you go.
So, I think we're covered.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Obenega.
Who promised that?
I'm not telling. Taking a fifth. Not literally, just a quart.
Really? Alcohol in a fifth?
Yeah. You caught that pretty quick. Any other comments, questions? If not, we need to go into executive session for legal briefing and contract negotiations. I'd like to recess, however, from, potentially from the executive session back to the commission agenda.
I'll make a motion to recess for legal briefing and contract negotiations with the idea that we may come back out of exact.
Second. Thank you.
Darren, can I talk to you?
Do you have a question, Cindy?
Darren.
No? If not, we need a vote for executive session. Those in favor of the item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.